Welcome to the Tuesday, February 27th, 2024 Montgomery Town Support of Education meeting. Thank you all for coming out in this rainy and warm evening. Mr. Trent, roll call please.
Yes, Mr. Carlson. Ms. Dowell.
Here.
Ms. Vilek.
Here.
Ms. Franco Hermann.
President.
Ms. Harris. Dr. Spencer Wallace.
President.
Ms. Willock, here again.
Here.
Ms. Spina. Mr. Todd.
President.
Thank you.
Time is 7:09. We will now reconvene in open session. Everyone rise for the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands alone, one nation, under God, indivisible, without any flaws or bounds.
All right, we can start with our NTSB student representative report. Ms. Robb.
Thank you. Good evening, Board of Education and local community. February has been a fantastic time for the students of Montgomery, filled with meaningful events and celebrations. This February marks Black History Month, an important month of recognition and celebration of Black American culture. Students have been recognizing this month all among all many events hosted by Black students in the community, and everything is moving forward as well. This month, MHS also recognized the Living Year, Black History Month's Year of the Dragon. This past month, the year two Bishop Program held out on the National Security Day, in which peer leaders from MHS traveled to the local schools to teach students about the power of resilience. They discussed famous individual struggles like the law of the use of science, like Hamilton, and engaged in meaningful conversations with students about resilience. This week marks the Spirit Week of Inclusion at MHS, in collaboration with the Montgomery County Development Program. Students and staff have been shown off their place of spirit by participating all week. Monday was the On Day to represent the bright future we have of inclusion, tied up with Tuesday to represent how we include every more meaningful picture. Comfy day on Wednesday because our school is a more comfortable place for us all when everyone is included. Monty Color's Day on Thursday because when everyone is included, we're all on the same team. And finally, Friday is Inclusion Day, inviting everyone to our march. The Boys Swim Team gave it their all in the sectional finals this past month, and with the Boys and Girls Swim Team and swim season ending, we congratulate all of our projects and teams. Junior Jackson Bay has advanced to the state tournament for Boys wrestling. We congratulate all of our wrestling teams this summer season. Earlier this month, the National Arm Society held an induction ceremony. Congratulations to all of the new members for this great achievement. The Montgomery Boys Basketball Team made history advancing to county finals. And this Monday, at the sectional quarterfinals, the team faced all the next East Brunswick, taking home the win and advancing to the sectional semifinals. The game is this Wednesday at 6:00 PM against Marlborough High School in the MHS gym. Congratulations to all of our student athletes in prospective seasons and ages, once again showing off Montgomery's talents and capabilities. The Black Student Union hosted a very successful family soul reunion in the community event, highlighting the difference between inclusion that surrounds our community. The event featured lots of good food and is showing up in the movie Spider-Man Across the Spider-Verse. This movie chronicles the story of Thomas More Alice and after Latino teen faces what it means to be a hero, promoting empathy, compassion, and values along the way. The Jump Star Organization, a successful dance expert, helped raise funds for scholarships for local and local students. The Interact Club is hosting their Pi is Senior Event, an event where seniors volunteer to be Pi and students pay to pile their papers with the winning senior, AKA the one who gets the paper first, with the reward of choosing the charity and the money he is donating to. Students and staff are getting excited for the upcoming senior trip to Disney. This trip is set to be one of the largest groups Montgomery's ever taken with students in history. And coming up next month in March, on the 15th, the Red Cross Club is hosting their annual Lethery. On the 22nd and 23rd, we have the top members of the community invited to attend MHS's production of the Addams Family. And throughout the month, there is more to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robb. We now move to superintendent's reports slash presentations. Ms. Robb, ten, five.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight we have a celebration. We're going to start, both the presentations are going to be presented by our building principals, but we're going to start with our Governor's Teachers of the Year. So each year, we have a teacher, this is the first time we've been doing it in a while, Teacher of the Year from each school. So the principals will be here to talk about their Teacher of the Year, and we are going to present them with their certificate from the Board of Education. And then, in May, there is a lunch of breakfast, brunch for the Teacher of the Year, held by the Somerset County, for all the Somerset County Teachers of the Year. So I will start with Mr. Dan Van Heist from Orchard Hill, who will come and speak about his Teacher of the Year. Then at the end of everyone speaking about each of their teachers, we're going to break for a few minutes because we have some light refreshments here to celebrate them.
Thank you, Superintendent Lockwin. I am honored to be here to honor, honored to be here to honor our recipient, Mrs. Monica Cool, as a member of the organization. Monica Cool has taught in the district since 2003 in both general and special education settings. Most recently, Mrs. Cool has found a home in teaching our kindergarten students here at Orchard, and has served an important role in helping to launch our full day program this year. Her nominations speak to her excellence as an educator, her leadership, and most of all, her overwhelming commitment to student growth. Mrs. Cool is skilled in providing opportunities to support student learning through multiple strategies that promote engagement and interaction among her students. She is definitely seen as a leader by her peers and has made numerous contributions to curriculum and programming over her 20-plus years in the Montgomery Township School District. If you're going to teach pre-K or K, as Mrs. Cool has done both, organization better be a strength of yours. Mrs. Cool is not only known for innovative and original Google Slide presentations that keep learning fun for her students, but she can also make a mean spreadsheet as well, something she has assisted me with a time or two. In the summer, Mrs. Cool runs our district-wide SOAR program, offering enrichment opportunities for students' continued academic and interest-based development. In addition to families registering for these opportunities, Mrs. Cool has been an advocate to provide scholarships for families, making this program accessible for all students. I took the opportunity today to ask some of her kindergarten students about what words they would use to describe Mrs. C., because anytime you can ask kindergartners to describe anything, it is enjoyable. So here are some of their choices. Thoughtful, grateful, kind, best teacher I ever saw, helpful, beautiful, and I love her makeup. It's with great enthusiasm that Orchard Hill names the hardworking, passionate, and dedicated Mrs. Cool as our Governor's Educator of the Year. Congratulations.
If you don't, Tom shrimp, and we don't want that in picture.
Finished?
Yeah. Look at, you can look at Jim.
Howard, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, behalf of Principal Susan Lee T. for the Village Elementary School. Good evening, everyone. I am proud to recognize and congratulate this Lori Weiner as Village Elementary School's Team of the Year. Ms. Weiner has had a stellar career in the Montgomery Township School District since she began her career here in 1997. I should really say that her career started when she was a student here. She is a lifelong resident who has deep and personal connections to this district. Not only has she gained tremendously from being a member of our community, but she has given tremendous, she has given even more value to us. She truly loves Montgomery and every single child and family who enters her classroom. And she will tell you, she loves teaching. Her students are her number one priority. Ms. Weiner is a fine and dedicated, dedicated fourth grade teacher who performs her instructional skills and responsibilities with energy and enthusiasm. Goals and activities for her lessons always convey high expectations for student learning. She works in partnership with her colleagues, professional learning communities, curriculum supervisors, and administrators to share ideas and to ensure that standards and learning expectations are thoughtfully and creatively met. Ms. Weiner consistently builds her repertoire of teaching and learning strategies and achieves tremendous success using assessment principles to plan and facilitate high quality learning that meets the needs of all learners. Ms. Weiner's classroom is a place where students thrive and develop a true love for learning. Through the use of community building and creative organizational strategies, she has created a positive, upbeat, and student-centered classroom environment. Her gift for connecting with and building a growth mindset in all of her students so they become confident and successful in all they do is impressive. Ms. Weiner is known for motivating, inspiring, and having everlasting impact on the young learners in her care. It is not uncommon for students and families to share heartfelt experiences they had with Ms. Weiner during previous school years or during interactions with her within the community. Ms. Weiner is also a proven leader beyond the classroom. She serves as the building vice president for the Montgomery Township Education Association and is a member of the district and school leadership teams. In these roles, she works with school administrators and staff to create and maintain a trusting work environment, share in decision-making and problem-solving, and advance equitable teaching and learning practices. In addition, she naturally serves as a thoughtful and reliable resource for colleagues within and across buildings. Ms. Weiner is an exceptional teacher. She cares deeply about her students, her fellow educators, and the teaching profession as a whole. Her leadership, out-of-the-box thinking, and expertise have positively impacted everyone who knows her, every child in her care, and the entire village school community. Village School would not be what it is without Ms. Weiner. She truly exemplifies the very best that teachers give to and develop in their students. And on behalf of the BES family, I'm excited to congratulate her on this honor.
It's all for real. Love you, Lori.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. A good shot. Get together.
That's right, be proud.
LMS Central is in Houston, Colorado.
Thank you. Tonight, in celebrating Kathy Gonzalez and in talking about students over and over again, we will be mentioning the importance of relationships and we'll even touch upon the subject of angels. In Montgomery, we greatly value relationships because we know that in the absence of relationships and a sense of belonging, learning doesn't occur. So this is why when teachers show up to work with students, colleagues, and families, positivity matters. Trust and belief in the capacity of others matters. And every single day, Kathy Gonzalez shows up to work with a smile on her face and love and compassion in her heart. Positivity exudes from Kathy's presence. Kathy believes in every one of her students, and as a result, all of her students do more, all of her students reach higher heights, having served under her tutelage. When asked to share just a little of her story, Kathy will tell you that she was born and raised right next to her in Princeton, New Jersey. Kathy will let you know that growing up, for quite some time, she was the antithesis of a hardworking student. In fact, Kathy will tell you that sometimes you can even see yourself graduating from Princeton High School. And here's where the angels come in. In an interview with LMS colleagues and administration, Kathy shared our angels in the form of some very special teachers, some kind-hearted community counselors, and some observant and caring workers at the Princeton Public Library turned her life around. These angels, as Kathy referred to them, spotted potential and goodness and talent in her that she had not yet embraced, thanks to support from these people in her community and her loving family. Kathy not only graduated high school, she went on to become the first in her immediate family to graduate with a degree in education, and she soon found herself right back inside those hallucoves of learning. To this very day, Kathy continues to immerse herself in learning to ensure she remains at the cutting edge. Kathy shares that her personal understanding of the power of relationships instills a deep sense of gratitude within her being that she credits to her superpower, which is the ability to see the potential to spot greatness in others. And it's because of her gift of gratitude that Kathy uses her talent as a multilingual to connect with people throughout our learning community who otherwise would find it difficult to use their voice to support their children in school. Kathy works tirelessly to connect with families in our community. Kathy has built trusting relationships with families by meeting and working with them in evenings, on weekends, and throughout the summer. Kathy's students describe her as a caring teacher. They say she's the kind of teacher you never forget because she takes the time to really get to know us as people. And we always want to go to her class because we know she cares about us. We have fun together and we can see with our own eyes that each of us has given our own individualized work that Ms. Gonzalez herself created to ensure we understand and feel good about learning. When Kathy's current and former students and families inform me that they'd like to connect with Kathy, I'm wise enough not to say, oh, I've got you now, but rather, I say, I'll, I get you, and together we'll get Kathy. And when I turn to Kathy without hesitation, her first response is, what do I need to do? And so Kathy, this is just a sliver of the reason why the learning community of LMS students and families, LMS staff, and the outstanding LMS family and teachers, all whom share the belief that relationships matter, that relationships come first in learning, this is why we proudly embrace you as our 2023-24 Teacher of the Year. You are an angel among us. And at LMS, we are a better team because of you.
Good evening, everyone. I stand before you proud to bestow this tremendous honor of Governor Educator of the Year for Montgomery Upper Middle School to Miss Stephanie Lacanour. She is synergy to UMS. She serves as an invaluable asset to our educational institution, embodying qualities that extend far beyond the judicial scope of teaching. She has been a trailblazer in the areas of trauma-informed practices, resilience, and overall wellbeing, significantly contributing to the growth and development of our school district, our community, both at home and abroad. She's an extraordinary educator, whose unwavering commitment to the wellbeing and development of both students and staff sets her apart as a true beacon of inspiration. Her tireless efforts within the district and Montgomery Township community have fostered a supportive and inclusive learning environment. Her dedication to trauma-informed training and mindfulness practices has empowered our students and staff alike, creating a space where everyone feels valued and understood. Beyond her role in the classroom, she has gone above and beyond by champion extracurricular travel opportunities and broadened the horizons of those under her guidance. Her visionary leadership has enriched the educational experience and has left an indelible mark on the entire school community. She is more than an exceptional teacher. She is a transformative force, shaping the future by instilling a passion for learning and empathy in all who are fortunate enough to be in her care. She is an innovative, forward-thinking educator who created the Global Leadership Course to support students in learning about what it means to be a global citizen and how to think globally and act locally. Her course connects to a variety of local community efforts and supports students in creating change right here in Montgomery. She has single-handedly crafted a change in curriculum through several avenues during her tenure. Noticing a significant change in stress amongst our youth, Stephanie took it upon herself to become a certified yoga and mindfulness instructor. In doing so, she integrated her knowledge into courses, creating a full mindfulness curriculum that all students take during their time here at Upper Middle School. Additionally, she began a reflection club, which teaches and practices stress relief strategies, in which hundreds of students have participated in, and I'll be honest, staff have joined as well. She's also co-chair of our, uh, members, excuse me, of a municipal alliance committee. She helps plan activity, calendars, and awareness months for our community, and has recorded mindfulness videos to share with others for Mental Health Awareness Month throughout the month of May. She has helped put positive message signs at the high school and middle school that don't give up, signs encourage students and adults to stay strong in difficult times, and offer affirming messages. In conclusion, Stephanie Lacanour has not only excelled as an educator, but has also transformed our school community into a nurturing and supporting environment. She is truly deserving of this honor and of this award, and we are so much better because you're amongst us. Thank you for that synergy they bring with you every single day, that calmness that stills even the most treacherous of days for both staff, students, and families. It is with great honor that I share this award with everyone present this evening and with Upper Middle School. Stephanie Lacanour, Governor's Educator of the Year.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my Teacher of the Year is here tonight, but we are going to still honor him, and he's very sad that he had to miss it. So, just one complaint. You moved the podium on. So it's with great pleasure and pride that I'm here tonight to share with you Montgomery High School's Governor Educator of the Year, Mr. Zoran Milic. I've known Mr. Milic in many capacities and always found him to be extremely talented and informed, and an educational professional who's demonstrated exceptional achievement in every capacity in which he's served. He's a creative, resilient, energetic, and fair instructional leader within the classroom and also extracurricularly on the football field. He's also a dirt track as well. His knowledge values excellence and strives to succeed in all undertakings. He's a strategic risk taker in attempts to make things happen by assisting and strengthening the knowledge base of all the educational stakeholders within his reach. As a member of the Social Studies Department, Mr. Milic teaches Crime and Punishment, Introduction to Sociology, and Outlook of Human Behavior. He's also head coach of Montgomery High School's football team. He's truly an exceptional educator who has positive and life-changing impacts on his students. He's dedicated his life to bringing out the best in everyone who's around him, but most importantly, our children. He's a stellar role model and students look up to him. I did not ask them for any words. Uh, we don't ask high school students words. Uh, and he always goes the extra mile with his efforts to achieve better results in the classroom and improve their behavioral choices in every arena. Each year, we witness Coach Milic teaching students what the true sense of a team is, both in his classroom and on the field. He has a firm commitment to success for each of his students, and it's clearly noticeable in every interaction and the strong bond and camaraderie formed within every class and team that he is a part of. He teaches students the importance of hard work, discipline, and personal accountability. He knows some students will push boundaries or break rules. However, he never gives up on any student. When he finds a young person who's lost their way, he creates opportunities and a path towards redemption, personal worth, and trust. It's these lessons of personal growth that are transformal, transformational for many students, and it's clear that it's a moment of pride for Coach Milic to see his students become the best versions of themselves. It's obvious that Mr. Milic's students and peers respect him, respect one another, and feel supported when they're within his reach. I want to tell you one story about Mr. Milic from the last year that really highlights the true essence of who he is and why he's such a big presence, both physically and theoretically within our school community. We have a student that came to us last year. Uh, the student came to us from another school district, and when we reached out to that school district to find out information about the student, it was a student and his brother. The school told us to put all of our efforts into the one student, the brother, and not waste our time on this other student, that he was behavioral concerned, he wasn't going to amount to much, his grades weren't going to pan out. Mr. Milic took that kid, that lost cause, as he was labeled by his previous school, on as a personal project, and really, all of the educators at Montgomery High School did, but Mr. Milic found an extra layer of importance there. That student, when he came to us, did struggle first. He struggled academically, he struggled behaviorally, and he struggled to find his way to fit in, but Mr. Milic never gave up on him. And he brought him into the weight room, kind of forced him to play a sport, sat with him, and offered to help him find his way academically and make connections with him within the student body so that way he too could find his personal group at Montgomery High School. At Montgomery High School, we believe every student can succeed, even the ones that someone else might label lost, and that's at the very essence of who Mr. Milic is. Slowly, what Mr. Milic did was change the path for this student. And this student could have any name or face because it's been so many students before this student as well. About halfway through last year, this student completely changed his trajectory. He went from someone that was struggling academically and behaviorally, getting up on school, talking about dropping out, to someone who was then succeeding in the classroom, making all the right behavioral choices, and would walk up to you in the hallway and shake your hand, because that's what Coach Milic taught him to do, both on the field and in the classroom. Academic success still doesn't come easy for that student, but now, he knows that he has a future. Hard work is never easy, and that is something that Mr. Milic has instilled in all of us. He works with this student to this day, as do many other professionals at Montgomery High School, to continue to create a path of opportunity within the classroom and as part of our larger community. Mr. Milic is relentless in fostering the understanding that student athletes, and I will emphasize the student first, and also students in the classroom. I lost my thought a little, and this is why you should read from your paper, but he's essential in fostering the understanding that it is students first. He understands the importance of academic standards and the role that we all play in supporting our students so they can achieve in and out of the classroom, and later in lives. He understands the power of creating meaningful pro-social interaction, how critical these relationships are, and the power that they have to strengthen a student's sense of belonging and desire to succeed within the classroom, but also, once they leave us in our greater world. Mr. Milic embodies the idea that it only takes one and all to make the difference in the life of a child, and many times, Mr. Milic is that one and all. Obviously, I cannot say enough positive things about him, and I have said these things to him as well, and I will make him sit down and watch the video with me, so he has to listen to that in the presence of me. He's charismatic, he's got an amazing personality, and if your children have not had him yet, I hope they do. This is why we started with kindergarten.
Congratulations to all of our Governor Educators of the Year. At this time, I want to take a short break. We have some refreshments and some water over, um, on the table over there. We have some refreshments and some water over, um, on the table over there. I want everyone to have the ability to say hi and congratulate our Governor Teacher of the Year, and enjoy our couple. Thank you.
Just real quick, at this moment, we will take intermission, but we do have to put a swoop over to all those in favor, state aye.
Aye.
At this time, I'll entertain the motion to reopen the public meeting. All in favor, state aye.
The second part of the superintendent's report, I'm going to ask the five leading principals back up to the podium. They're going to do a presentation called HIV Education Across the Schools.
So I'm going to start us off, I'm just going to provide a little framework about harassment, intimidation, and bullying, HIB, teaching kids how to make good choices. It's complex work. At first glance, one might think that teaching kids about HIB is just an act of using words, which is using words to harm, as simply teaching kids what not to say, a study in word choice. But teaching about HIB is so much more to us than just a lesson in word choice. Teaching to prevent HIB involves teaching kids the importance of relationships and teaching kids how to build relationships with everyone in their learning communities so that every single person feels a sense of belonging, feels welcomed, and feels respected. At the same time, instructing to prevent HIB is about teaching kids how to self-regulate in the face of really big emotions. We teach our students how to make themselves self-aware, their feelings of discomfort, their feelings of frustration, and their feelings of anger and hurt, and then we have to teach our students how to navigate these feelings, how to name them, and how to seek support to negotiate them, rather than choosing what comes so naturally to so many of us in these uncomfortable times, which is choosing hurt for words to mask feelings of hurt or inadequacy. So this work is no small feat, and here in Montgomery Township School District, from the moment you enter, whether it be in kindergarten or in your senior year, or any time in between, at every school throughout the district, we are committed to teaching our students lifelong human lessons of self-awareness and self-regulation, and tonight, we're going to just show you a glimpse of that big work that we're committed to.
We have this picture. All right, look at that. Okay, so all five of us can stand up here and speak to our schools specifically and what takes place at each school, but we really try to give a unified approach to this presentation, and we thought that since we really all value and believe the same things and try to achieve the same things at our schools, we tried to provide a more unified and comprehensive thing. So when we talk about prevention across Montgomery Township Schools in terms of HIV, we start with what we value and what we kind of bring back to a baseline. So it's what do we value at each school, what do we value across the district, what is the language that we will use day in, day out, that makes students believe they are part of a special community, and when you step outside that community and make a bad choice in terms of something you say or do, we want to make sure that we address that. So it starts with shared values, consistent language, that is something that runs deep throughout all of our schools. I'll probably do that after Heather speaks a little bit more.
I don't know why they care to do this, Dan, that just makes me look bad when I can. So a lot of that, when I think about prevention, the best thing that we can do is foster a sense of belonging for all of our students. So when I think about fostering a sense of belonging, it really hinges on creating opportunities to build pro-social relationships and pro-social interactions. So when I think about that, it's all the other stuff, you know, what happens in the classroom is intensely important on so many levels, but it's also what happens outside of the classroom. So when we're looking at prevention and we see, you know, I have a hard time distinguishing between prevention and education because those things really do go hand in hand, it's what's happening in our hallways, you know, how are we greeting our students as they walk into the door? What are we offering in terms of clubs, activities, extracurriculars, where our students have that opportunity to interact on more than just a curricular level? So, you know, we can spout off all the different statistics with it, I can tell you that we've got sixty-three different clubs and, you know, thirty-three different varsity sports, and that's great, but it still doesn't encapsulate what happens within that. So we just spoke about Teachers of the Year, and what we heard about was everything in addition to what they do curricularly. So it's all those opportunities for relationships that are at that foundation for prevention and for that foundation of belonging and really understanding who each of us is when it comes to our core values. There are no two of us that are alike, and it's only when we recognize that we all bring something to the table that we really can assess the foundation of prevention. Dan wants to come back, I see it happening.
I'm just thinking about, sorry, just thinking a little more about what's up there that's concrete, that can give a good kind of view as to our day-to-day or what stands out, that bullet that says consistent review of behavior, discipline trends at all buildings, our schools have school climate and safety teams where HIV data is reviewed as part of that team. It's something that we do utilize in terms of prevention to see what kinds of trends there are tied to those HIV investigations and reports, so that is a concrete, in-the-moment example of how we're examining trends every so often to try to prevent HIV, so just a concrete example there. Anything else for prevention, Heather?
I feel like you're challenging me.
I'm not, I'm not. All right, let's move it on.
You want to ask a question?
No, I don't want to just see them.
Oh.
Thank you so much.
So Raquel and I are going to continue with education across the schools, and education across our schools look very similar. We place a strong emphasis on relationship building, the development of strong and respectful and welcoming communities that every student can contribute to and be proud of. So these ideals are communicated very beginning of the year when we're talking about expectations for ourselves, rules in our schools, how we want to interact and engage with one another, and then these conversations continue through counselors getting into the classrooms and talking about the same ideals and practices. It triples down to our teachers who bring this up every day with our students, following expectations in the classroom, in the school, and outside of the school. We also have a DEI committees that is a student's term, or DEI committees come up with projects and activities that are inclusive for every child, they provide resources for staff and students to use to encourage positivity, inclusion, diversity, and a sense of belonging. And when you look at some of the pictures that we have, there's so many group activities, there's so many things that kids can be a part of in our schools where they feel proud and where they learn about other students and how to be proactive.
So in addition to the message that Lacey has shared, one of the things that is paramount for us in the district is the fact that our students, before learning can take place, they need to be seen. They need to be seen by way of who welcomes them in the building, what they see as they're navigating the halls, whether it's in a structured setting in the classroom, on the sports field, in a core curricular, following their passion, it is just wanting to have a conversation about something that they're passionate about, that they don't see in their building, that they want to be a part of. It is what is at the heart and at the foundation of education. The importance of being seen is also allowing students to feel that they have a voice and that their voice is important and that what they value matters. One of the things that I wanted to add with the prevention is that every building has a threat assessment team, and one of our things that we pride ourselves is being responsive, not reactive. And in order to be responsive, we need to be ahead of the curve. We need to recognize that in unstructured learning environments, students will explore boundaries, and we need to be there to make sure that the education is consistent, that it is supportive, that it is restorative, that it is holding students accountable, but also providing them the opportunity and the space in order for their concerns to be heard and to be understood so that they can help restore not only themselves the harm that they have caused, the impact of their words or their actions, and recognize that it's an opportunity for continued growth and development, and most importantly, that there is someone, individuals in our buildings, that they can rely on as a resource and as a support, not only for our students but also for our families. We also have a responsibility to understand that kids have within their reach something that is very fleeting, which is social media and digital access. They are, especially in, you know, five through eight in the high school, we have their own devices, and there is a lot of instruction and education that is imparted about that digital print, and that's something that is so fleeting, is never fully gone, and how we want to see ourselves in the interactions and the mediums that we engage in is also equally important as it is a part of their lived experiences. So this education is something that we are navigating every single day, and I would add that it is an education that is the responsibility of everyone, every single day that comes in contact with all our students, that begins with the stop, the bus stop, the parents who drop their children off, or the guardian, the custodial staff, the cafeteria personnel, our secretaries, counselors, case managers, paraprofessionals, school psychologists, everyone in our buildings, our supervisors, obviously our teachers, our administrators, our support groups, our communities, are all integral players in the education. This is not something that we are charged with on our own, and we recognize the magnitude and we also are here to the commitment of its importance.
So Lisa and I are going to talk a little bit about destruction and how it's embedded throughout our classrooms and throughout our buildings. So Raquel talked a little bit about restorative practices and how that helps students respond to situations that they might find themselves in. A precursor to that is responsive classroom and morning meetings. So at the K six level, responsive classroom is a philosophy that we use within our classrooms. It's primarily to build a connection between academic learning and social emotional learning, and one of the most important parts of it is the morning meeting. There are also other activities that are built in throughout the day, but the primary goal is to build a community, to build a sense of belonging, to make sure that every child, every day, has someone who acknowledges them, makes a connection with them, talks to them, and understands who they are. So during the morning meeting, you'll see a little picture there, they start this day with a greeting, that's one component, and then there might be an opportunity where they share something, they'll do an activity together that creates team building and a classroom connection, and then the teachers will talk about what's going on for the day. So the students will know exactly where they stand, they're connected with their peers, and that the goal is to minimize and prevent bullying because when you have a strong connection with others around you, you're less likely to bully and cause a harm, you create a family, you create a sense of belonging in the classroom. We also find during these conversations that students are able to share unique perspectives and ideas about themselves, something special and unique that they did with their families and their personal lives, and then teachers encourage students to have conversations and connect with each other throughout the day so those conversations can continue. A morning meeting also allows teachers to follow for things that we may talk about in the morning, or things that come up in the school day, or issues that the school might be addressing, whether it's behavior or behavior, teachers can reinforce those conversations with the kids. And then the kids actually have opportunities to share out other things about themselves or to be a leader or run an activity, take a leadership role, and they can do activities that are also fun, such as games and other activities. The use of the inclusive curriculum is something that is embedded throughout our schools. It supports the New Jersey inclusive legislation so we can make sure that every people group is seen, heard, valued, and connected. We use our texts and monthly celebrations to emphasize these celebrations. We have kids who present and talk about them, we have kids who run activities, whether they're on our more new city village, or as you heard earlier from our student representative activities at the high school, but every building has an opportunity for inclusive instruction and curriculum. We use texts as a springboard for this. Books are always a great way to help students see themselves, so we see books as mirrors, windows, or sliding glass doors. So books are mirrors because students can see themselves. We want to ensure that we have books that are by diverse authors, with diverse characters and perspectives and experiences. That's one way for students to learn about each other, learn about challenges and how to resolve them, and it also helps with problem solving. So if we do encounter an incident in school, a book is a great way to problem solve and help children learn through those experiences. Books are our windows where students look out and see people who are different than them, books are sliding glass doors where they can actually step into an experience and have empathy for someone else or sort of put themselves in someone else's shoes.
Okay, peer leader outreach, mental health, or social emotional learning. I think one word that encapsulates that is connectivity. So take a look at that good-looking bunch up in the right-hand corner. Those students going down into the lower grades are like rock stars.
Yep.
And they are, and they create a safe space for our students across the grades to say, you know what, I know what you're going through, been there, done that, let's talk about that because these are the students who are now being most controlled over those feelings and emotions, and they're giving tips and tricks to our younger kids, and the kids just soak it up. Guardian, because that's where you're pushing that argument. The current events, the kids talking about their opinions and all, and all of us are...
Kids have a lot of opinions. So, you know, what goes on in our greater world, whether it be in our media community or, you know, as we move outward, is something that our students care deeply about. I've got to be honest with you, education has changed a lot since most of us were in school. I cannot remember being as in tune with current events. You know, social media has done many good things, it's also done many negative things for our kids. Once upon a time, I only grew up a couple of towns over, I didn't know what happened in the school next to me, I didn't know what happened in the town next to me, I didn't know what happened a couple of states away. Our kids know, and they're keenly in tune to what goes on, and they're keenly in tune to the tone in which things are put out there. And a lot of times, what's really difficult is, you know, when you look at adolescence and you look at it through the lens of what is developmentally appropriate for a kid, they should be trying on all kinds of different personalities, language, opinions, and things like that, and that's really what we encourage. The difficult thing is, we have to encourage them to do it in a way that isn't demeaning or offensive to the people sitting next to them. We can all share different opinions, but we have to do it in a way that is safe for everybody involved. So we spend a lot of time with that. It also calls for a focus, you know, we cannot ignore that there is a mental health crisis going on around the world. It's a very difficult thing, so you have these, we have our students, our young people that, you know, are developing, they're developing thoughts, feelings, emotions, there's, you know, they're maturing slowly, there's hormones, there's a lot in play, and they've got to kind of balance and see where they fit in and understand that greater world and how that impacts them as well. There's a lot that our kids are dealing with. So we do make sure that when we're, you know, education and instruction is embedded through everything, but so is mental health. So it can't just be a pit stop anymore. When I grew up, we had a lot of different messages about self-esteem, and there were posters on the walls everywhere, self-esteem, do you have it? It's a little more than self-esteem now. You know, our kids understand their own mental health and their own emotional needs more than most of us do, and they're able to articulate in it, they're able to advocate for it, but not everybody is. We have our Cooper Care Days at the younger levels where they take a pit stop and look at mental health.
I think it's much more than a pit stop, it is a communal pause to recognizing the importance of self-reflection, learning strategies to help navigate the nuances, that is, to be a student in every one of our buildings, and it also allows students to recognize that it is okay to take a pause, to just come up for air, stop what you're doing as a community, and engage in activities that are not just academic, that we are much more than the academics, that we are much more than the rigor and the stellar school district that we are because of the performances. We are also at the humane level, navigating many nuances and many changes, and our Cooper Care Days at UMS is something that I am incredibly proud of because it is something that we do as a community, it's not staff, it's staff and students, it's everyone in the community. So that's something that's really important, and it's something that is infused throughout our district. our district.
I will take communal pauses in my daily routine. It is more than a pit stop. And it does look different at every level. And I'll explain in a minute why mental health is so important when it comes to HIV. So at the high school, every department looks at mental health and looks at it through a different lens, whether it be looking at different concepts around test stress and anxiety that might happen in the math department, to different methods of expression that might happen in English Language Arts. It's something that's constant. So, and also we have our counselors and all the other wonderful professionals that work with our students. What we know is, and what the data points at, is when kids don't feel good about themselves, they are not nice to others. And HIV is more than just not being nice, but that's really at the cross of it. So if you don't feel good, you're not going to treat anybody else in that regard as well. So responding to HIV, this is something that we get a lot of questions about and this is what I need to parallel this with. I've never met a young person that doesn't make a bad choice at some point. I've never met a human being that doesn't make a bad choice, even answer a young person at some point. It's not the choices that we make, but rather what we do answer that moment that really defines what our character is and who we are. And that is what we try to instill with our young people. The law, the legislative body that surrounds HIV, harassment, intimidation and bullying doesn't do a good job of pushing that out in a manner that parents and students can see it without us being explicit about it in the moment. So when I think about it like that, every time we have a student that reports something that may believe to be harassment, intimidation or bullying, it gives us an opportunity to talk, to educate and to work with our students and our families so that way they can see something from a different perspective. Yes, I understand, it is amazing. It does not feel good to go through it as the offender, it does not feel good to go through it as the victim, it doesn't feel good to go through it as the principal. You know, nobody wants to see any of this happen. But really, it gives us that critical pause where we can educate and shift the direction of ourselves. The bigger problem is when kids don't report these instincts to us and they go unchecked. And we don't have that opportunity to have those critical conversations at all the levels because the repercussions are small when you're within the confines of school achievement. They feel harsh, especially to a kid that maybe has never had an interaction before or any disciplinary consequence. But it's when you're in the greater world that we're looking at things like people getting charged with hate crimes and things like that, that we need to make sure we have that opportunity to share that perspective. So what does it look like when we respond? We're one of the districts, and I'm very aware that we have it, that does not have principals or principals. So that means that when somebody reports something to us that they believe it might be an act of harassment, intimidation and bullying, we are automatically investigated. That means I don't get to pause and have an opinion about it. I don't want to have a picture of it because I don't know what I'm going to uncover as I go through them. And it's all about the tactics with which we approach investigation of that. Now, there'll be times that we have more HIV than less. And quite frankly, the fact that we have more is because we are educating our kids, we are doing the job at the prevention end, we are doing our job at the inclusive, making sure we're including it curricularly, where kids know to say something now. So years ago, when we had people coming out and saying, yeah, that happens all the time, but nobody's going to do anything, that's a deep-seated belief that kids have that came from, you know, maybe one person having a bad experience, or maybe somebody never just recording it because they believed nobody would do something. And that's just foster and infester to the point where unacceptable behavior has just become allowable. We can't allow it anymore. So we have all acts that are reported verbally to the school principal. Principal then, the principal or designated, so it's usually a principal or vice principal, that then informs the parents and guardians of all the students of the alleged incidents. So that means on both the victim end and the offender end, with one, within one day we initiate an investigation. And this is touching because sometimes people get really upset with us. So people will come to us and say, I just wanted you to know, I don't want you to investigate. Or I changed my mind, please don't. Or why did you initiate an investigation? That's not what I wanted this to be. We do not legally have a choice. Anything that comes to us, we must investigate. People will say all the time to me, I'm afraid of retaliation. I promise we are really good at what we do. Retaliation isn't a thing. And if somebody would dare to retaliate, that's a different level of conduct or discipline.
So throughout the investigation, which the timeliness of this, it's the, our anti-bullying specialists which go through an extensive training, and we have more than one at each building, is charged with, you know, investigating the alleged defense for both the alleged victim and offender. And during that course of investigation, there are two things that are happening simultaneously. There is an investigation and then there is the code of conduct. And as the principal and vice principals, we have to adhere to that code of conduct and determine whether or not there was, there is a discipline that is imparted as a result of that separate from the investigation. And part of that is what we discussed about education and explaining the why. Everyone needs to understand the why. Why is there an investigation? Why is there a code of conduct? Why is it that this is going to be recorded in Genesis as, you know, part of the process of investigation? All of those are valid questions. And I think part of the frustration that Heather voiced is that we are not at liberty to disclose information as it's happening, as it's being investigated, because we need to protect all parties involved. Once the investigation is completed, there is direct contact with all involved and also there's follow-up correspondence with a letter that is sent home with the initial and then with the findings. And one of the things that we stress is that there's an alleged investigation, there is no assumption of guilt. And that the process, while it's timely, you know, it's done very quickly, the investigation or within 10 days, the turnaround time of when the final decision is made is longer. And that creates a level of uncertainty and maybe concerns with those who are involved. And that is unfortunate, part of the reality of this process, but nonetheless important to the process. So one of the things that we want to clarify too is that building principals and administration are not a part of the investigation. That is done by the ABSs, the anti-bullying specialists.
I had another thought and it quickly escaped because it's been a very long day. We do then give the superintendent a report within two days of completion of our investigation. Superintendent then reviews it and it gets moved on to the board level. There's a lot of, you know, this looks very technical, this, 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 this. What you're missing here is all the touchpoints with students, meaningful conversations, counseling that happened. And I'll be very honest with you, some of the most wonderful students that I know, I've sat with at some point over an HIV. On the victim end and the offender end. So I just need to go back to that, that concept. It's not what kids do wrong. You know, HIV, it's, it feels very heavy when it's happening. There's a very in-depth investigation. You get a very legal letter at the end that tells you which way it went. But these are still children. Whether they're here from pre-K to senior year, I know that some of my kids look older than some of us do, but they're still children. And we very much so treat them like that. We want them to learn, we want them to grow, we want to have opportunities to do things with them, that we can create those opportunities. And at the end of the day, it's not what happened, it's everything else that is most important. So it's all those decisions that come after that. It's our ability to adapt with students and create opportunities for them to learn and grow and become the best versions of themselves that they want to be. One more.
Right. So we just wanted to bring to the board's attention one last educational opportunity, I guess. So Mr. Palongo, would you click on that finger, fingerprint icon there? And then along the left-hand side, you'll see that there is a tab or a link for HIV 101, parent edition presentation. Let's just say by chance, there's still questions after all of that. We have created, and Dr. Young, who is our district's anti-bullying coordinator, she has created a 101 version that is very accessible and easy to understand for parents. So you're looking at the principal that gets to try to explain this to parents of six and seven-year-olds, which carries its own different kind of weight. And a lot of times, there is that disbelief and just like amazement that this could take place, this investigative process could take place for students of such an age. But, you know, as Heather shared, that's not at our discretion. Regardless, the 101 presentation is there now for parents to view. And Dr. Young answers everything she can from a parent's perspective about the process. So that is up there, it's posted, and Dr. Young will be here next month, I believe, to do more HIV review.
And I'm just going to acknowledge this on the other end of the spectrum because Dan and I can be people opposites, you know. He has the parents and the students that come in and said, I can't believe that this is happening. And, you know, I have a kindergartner, so I too understand that. And then I have the other end of the spectrum where people are so afraid about what this could mean for their future. And does this keep my child from whatever the post-secondary opportunity is? And the answer is that we will always, always make the best opportunity for kids. No one does it. Kids are kids. So I heard something and I shared it at my bachelor's school night this year, and it was important for me to hear as a parent, especially of, I have a six-year-old now and an eleven, almost eleven-year-old. And my son's middle school principal got up and said, I hope that you don't all suffer from NMK syndrome. And here's me, I'm like, I might have it, what is it? And it's not my kid. You know, we all want to believe that it would not be my kid. I want to believe that it would not be my kids'. It's going to be my kid someday. My kid is going to say something or do something and he's going to accidentally cross a line. And I know and I hope that he has educational professionals like we have here that are going to be there to help in that moment, to help me continue to teach him right from wrong. Because really, when you think about it, you know, as parents, we're with our kids for a good portion of the day. And then the educators are with our parents for another significant portion of the day. So when we're all working together to make sure that our kids are the best that they can be, that's when we really succeed. So hopefully I don't suffer from NMK later.
I think that's the presentation.
I'm already seeing that our president Todd has a question and the superintendent Wapu is thinking of results several, like with the five of them on there together.
Yeah, I have a question. One of the things that somebody said was that you watch all the inputs that the kids have, and it makes sense. And somebody brought this up to me in the last week, is that phones are sort of ever-present and there's no pause for them. So how do we, how do we handle this?
I think that you really, so the question is about phones and what do we do with that? And it's really a 360 view. So, you know, there's a lot of education that has to happen within the school buildings, but there's also a lot of education that has to happen at home. In what responsible use is and what it looks like and understanding of social media and print. And I'll be honest with you, you know, I come from a time where I remember somebody saying, hey, do you have texting in your plan? I've got the one with 100 texts. And now our kids are coming to school with unlimited data plans and, you know, nothing on their phones that really stops them from exploring the internet. And the harsh reality is, and it's going to be hard for everybody to hear, it's still hard for me to hear, the minute you put a cell phone, a smartphone in your kid's hand, you are giving them access to everything. That has to come with some education. Kids are curious. It's part of where they are developmentally, so they're going to go out there and look, they're going to go out there and look to understand, and they're going to mimic what they see. So a lot of it is, and I find myself now starting to have to do that intentionally myself, with, you know, middle school in my district starts in fifth grade, as well as our lower middle school, you know, my kid has a lot of questions. And I can either seize the opportunity to have the difficult conversations, and we've had to have a couple, or I miss the opportunity to direct him and help him to understand. And I really think that that's for all of us. So whether it's in the classroom with a misstep or, you know, it might be something as simple as language that comes up in a curricular piece, or, you know, for me, a herd event that's happening in the world, we have to give students, our children, a safe opportunity to share and explore, ask questions and us provide them with this information. It's hard because we're, nobody is with a kid a hundred percent of the time. But I will tell you that I am a big proponent of checking your child's phone. You know, look at their browser history. There are different tools that parents can use out there. I've got, you know, my kids don't have phones yet, they have an iPad and I have software on there so I can see exactly what they're doing and saying. And it's not to come at them from a point of, you know, I think about maybe how my parents would have dealt with it and it maybe would have been very loud in my house. It's really from a point of, you know, I'm curious about why you chose that word, you know, I'm curious about why you maybe interacted like that, can you help me understand when you heard that? And having that conversation and keeping that door open so that way they're willing to interact. But kids will, you know, human beings inherently keep secrets, so making sure that door is open so we can have that conversation.
So at the middle school, you know, it's often away and, you know, we stress the importance of disconnecting to reconnect. Disconnecting so that there is limited distraction to being active participants in the learning. And I think that students are really challenged with their devices not being part of them every minute of the day. And don't get me wrong, there's an important piece to this, right? They're very busy, they want to know what's happening next, what their schedule has changed, they want to deviate from a schedule. So part of it is, is explaining the why it's so important to be fully present in the learning environment and, and being active participant in that learning. And also the responsibility that comes with what is actually so pressing. Because if it is an emergency or there's a shift in your schedule, then that's why we have amazing secretarial staff, that's why we have responsiveness for early pickup or notes, anything that, you know, if a student needs to be contacted or brought down, we have the ability to be very responsive in that regard. You know, the last thing we want is for students to, you have their devices on hand to kind of meet in the bathroom and have a powwow, when they should be in class, right on time. That's just an example. So it's disconnect to reconnect. And that's why we find that having that policy is really important. And we're also finding that, you know, families that are, you know, are very responsive to this and have an understanding of why it's so important. Any other questions for the group?
So I know in my case, I didn't, I didn't want to get phones from my kids. And they got to, I think it must have been, but they're in college now, so they're not going to see this. But they were, they were told that they needed to have phones. Is that right?
I would say that I have probably the most phone-heavy building. Nobody needs to have a phone. It is a convenience factor that I think kids and parents enjoy. But whether or not you need to have phones is a personal decision.
They said that there were some classes where they didn't have enough Chromebooks and so they had to...
I'm not going to say they were lied, but I think that device is a blog we use term. So the high school is a BYOD school, so bring your own device school. So we do expect that our students come with a device. Now, we definitely have students that don't have phones, they bring a Chromebook to school. We do not, and never have provided Chromebooks for everyone. I can tell you that our staff overwhelmingly prefers that their device is not a phone and rather a Chromebook or a computer because it is very different. I'm picturing typing out papers on phones and that doesn't really work out well. There are things that they can do with phones, so participate in a coot or something like that, but it's definitely not a must-have or a need. So they were right on the device, they needed a device.
So just quickly, I apologize and I thank you for the amount of work that you put into this because it's an exuberant amount of work and I thank you for your fairness. Just as a clarification, you had alluded to the idea of watching for trends and patterns in terms of your cultures and your schools. I'm wondering if you specifically use former HIDs to really look at patterns of behaviors of words being used. So that's a data point for all of you.
We do indeed, and I'll give you an example of standing here at the podium on the wrong side of the room. So at the high school, we actually have weekly meetings where we look at all of our data trends specifically with anything that's HIV-related. Some weeks, we've got... Some weeks, we've got nothing to talk about in that arena and we talk about the rest of our discipline trends because we really do want to see where things are shifting. And I'll give you an example. With our current freshman class, we saw some specific trends that we thought to ourselves, "We can do better. We need to get in front of these kids and make sure that we have an opportunity to write this." Because when you see a trend happening in a negative direction, you have a choice. You can either interrupt the trend or you can keep dealing with the outcome of the trend. So what we chose to do was interrupt the trend and we took all of our freshmen during their health and phys ed block and as an administrative team got in front of them with also some of our counselors and our A B Ss and said, "We need to explain to you some of the data that we see coming in and where you play a role with this and we need to help you to not go in this direction." So we're very candid with our students. I will tell you that we spend a lot of time talking with kids, not just once they've made the mistake, but before as well. So whether it's sitting down in a lunchroom, I know they really love it when I sit down at a lunch table and say, "Hey, guys, what's up, Utah?" Or you know, at any of our events, those pro-social interactions aren't just limited to our kids. So you know, people joke around, "We see you at so many things." I go to so many things because that's how I keep the student body moving in a positive direction. So if we don't know what's going on with our kids, the good, the bad, all the stuff that comes in the middle, we're really just going to be in a constant triage that you're participating in and that's not a best practice.
Thanks. And just please let us know when we start regarding the aftermath, if there's a way that the board can be supportive of this work, you know, just please reach out to us. Thanks.
I just have a follow-up related to Michelle's question. For the other administrators, do you also use your data that you see and how do you use that the way that Heather does?
Yes, we do use data. We have safety and climate teams in each of our buildings where their sole purpose is to look at data, to look at trends. We have a parent that sits on that committee as well. And then we use that to build our programs or have our teachers communicate to their students about things that we're learning. We'll use our board of news as an opportunity, we use the center as an opportunity to make changes. Just to talk a little bit about the phone, the elementary school is not immune to students coming in with phones, but we expect the phones to be secured away during class time, but we also have students use their watches sometimes. And we have had experiences where students may use their phones or a device to do something that's inappropriate and then we have to reteach things that we proactively do, which is digital citizenship. So that is part of our technology class where students learn about digital citizenship from our technology teachers, how to safely use a device, how to be aware if you're chatting during the game, which sometimes does happen at home and then sometimes those activities trickle in. So when it comes to parent involvement and support from the community, is we need parents to consider parental controls, consider the age of the child, whether they're mature enough to have a device that they use on their own. And then having a time where those devices go away as a family, have family time, where all the devices go away, they're locked up, they're secure, and just keeping an eye on what your children are doing. Because sometimes, like I said, that does trickle into the building and it could turn into an HIV situation and then we're sort of, you know, a triage and trying to educate them about those situations.
So the data that you get that drives your programming could potentially change year to year depending on the trends that you see.
It could. And sometimes the trends at the elementary level when students are using language that's inappropriate or offensive to someone else. There's a mix of students who know, who learn from their families what kind of words and language is inappropriate, but then there are students who may just be mimicking someone else, whether it's a teenager or someone they encountered or someone on the bus. And then we have to, it might be a long line of investigating to find out the source of that information. So a lot of education, that's why we're trying to be as proactive as we can. And then we can always say to kids, "Let's reflect back to this lesson," or "Let's reflect back on this assembly," or "This guest speaker," or "This book that we read." And then we sort of circle back to all those learning opportunities and all those resources that we use to then re-educate and give them all those things.
Thank you. So I forgot something. I remember before when I said I had a thought and it walked away while it came back. And it's really in relation to the questions over here, as well as yours and what Susan was saying. There's a, there's an extra piece that I need people to know. And we spend a lot of time at the high school educating our students about this and it's very specific to social media and electronic communication. So there's an interesting piece of case law that emerged in New Jersey a couple of years back, I think it's either two or three years back now. So when it comes to code of conduct, you cannot discipline a student for something that they've done off of school grounds, except when it comes to HIV. So the case law that came out years ago, I'm not going to bore you and go through the case, but basically what happened is an act of, or several acts of harassment, intimidation, bullying happened outside of school. So off grounds, I believe it was at a wall. That electronic communication then impacted the student's school day. So the courts ruled that the electronic communication, while still outside of the school day, school grounds and school hours, still could be ruled as HIV. And that's an important piece of information that especially some of our older kids and our families need to understand. And that goes back to that digital footprint where, you know, we think that we can put things out there and just delete them. Nothing is ever deleted. And kids think we're kidding when we say that. And then every once in a while, we bring in local law enforcement so that way they can share about how easy it is to get that information, even if you go into your deleted, because the kids are like, "Well, I even went into my deleted and deleted it." Which is a thing, so if you want to know that, go into your deleted, delete it all. It's still there. So your digital footprint never leaves. And that, you know, is a hard learning point for our kids because I sometimes refer to them as paper tigers, so everybody gets very tough when it's just something that they're putting out there on paper, whether it's email or some type of social media communication. It's not who they are. They would never say that to somebody's face and they tried it on and what they assumed was a safe manner, and it comes back. And that's the thing that's hard to understand. And that case law really was pivotal in how HIV is handled. And that's another thing that's difficult with the law. You know, things are constantly evolving. So why is everybody so scared of HIV? Because it's continuously made scary. We try to make it something that's not and it really is. We're talking about kids making bad choices and that is, that's, but it's all the rhetoric around it in the media and you know, some of the harsh language that comes out legally that makes it very, very difficult for people to not be struck out.
So part of this, the responsibility is not something that one person exclusively is charged with. One of the things that is really important to know is that in every respective school, we have teams and we have student voices. We have our compassionate care team, our trauma-informed team, our threat assessment team. And we're not there just to, we're there to respond to trends, to the data, we're also there to listen. We have students in our principal advisory teams. They have a really good handle on how they see themselves, what they want to see differently in their building, where we can improve, where we have to hold each other accountable for things that are happening, whether it be, you know, unkind interactions, bus behavior, vandalism, how it impacts our school day. So this is a charge that is unified in its effort to really be open and transparent about the progress that we continuously need to make. And the education, how it needs to be responsive and very much a reflection of the realities of our students and what they're navigating every day. And I will add, in my first year as an administrator and proud principal of Montgomery Upper Middle School, I can tell you implicitly that the support is not only there for our students and our families, but it's also there for our staff and it's also there for our administrative team. The process by which we delivered our message to you today was a team effort. It was a unified effort. It was a message of consistency, of importance of responsibility, of our commitment, and also our message that this is not something that we can navigate alone, that we need all of you, that we need the family and you know, support, we need community involvement. We need to kind of hone in on what we can bring into our buildings to elevate the awareness and to send messages of resiliency and empathy and inclusion. Susan Macy said it beautifully with windows, mirrors and sliding doors. We're not magicians. But it is, Montgomery is a magical place. And with that, we will reconvene. So thank you for your time.
You have a question for board members?
The representatives, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
That concludes the presentation. So I just want to personally thank all of the community members who joined us in our three strategic planning meetings. They are completed at this time. We are awaiting the New Jersey School Board's affiliate or rep, Gwen Gordon, to send us the information from last week's strategic planning meeting. And then the administration in the district and I will sit down and come up with the goals and objectives for the goals that will be implemented starting of school year with timelines attached to it. Thank you.
Thank you Superintendent Wawka. You now move to committee representative reports. We'll start out with MTA report. Mr. Doyle.
Good evening, board members, committee members, administrators, colleagues. Thanks again for your time. Just want to share a couple of things. I think it's amazing our governor's teacher of the year award winners, they are literally stars among stars and I've worked with them, being in Montgomery for 23 years. I'm feeling a little old, nostalgic because we have a new staff academy every year and I was one of these staff members chosen to share whatever knowledge I had at that time with staff members. And I do remember Monica, Monica Cool, the first day, 23 years old, coming to that new staff academy. And here I will share what I knew with her. And now she's up here on stage, receiving that teacher of the year award. So you know, amongst our other stars that we've had tonight as well. So it's really nice to see people recognized and literally it's one of the hardest choices that people can make when you're trying to pick from, you know, the teachers that we have in Read Across Montgomery. So it's nice to see that happen. Couple of things going around in with the MTA. We do have our virtual relaude series. There's an event coming up tomorrow at 7:00 P. M. for Orchard and Village families. The title, "Lila's Lunchbox." It's a great performative story about Ramadan and fasting. March is right around the corner, February is coming to an end, believe it or not. And that means Read Across America is coming to celebrate the joy of reading. We have 54 classrooms that have requested guest readers and I know invitation has gone out to all kinds of legislative, community members, teachers and also board members. I know some of you have signed up already, so thank you very much for filling up some of the spots. We appreciate that. And the kids, especially at elementary schools, love just seeing new faces come in. You know, they get tired of our faces all the time, so they want to see new faces come in. So thank you for signing up. If you haven't yet, there's still time, there's still slots available. In addition to the guest readers, we also have all kinds of fun activities planned. Teachers doing it individually in the classroom, we have school events, we have spirit days. So it's usually a week of fun in the elementary schools and really do embrace it. The MTA also will be providing a book to the classrooms that are participating with the guest readers for Read Across America as well, to add to their library. To celebrate Read Across America, we also have another guest author, read aloud, coming up. It'll be virtual on 3/7 and now we have 7:00 P. M. Information's posted on social media and also through our PTA is kind enough to share that out as well. It's a teenage author, Sanu Mukuma. So it's nice to have someone that the kids can relate to by having a teenage author who has two books that are published and she'll be reading to the kids during a virtual relaude. I know it's a little bit early, but please save the, May 15th is going to be our annual Music From The Heart celebration where we'll be presenting, or staff will be presenting Mary Poppins. So this is going on, this Music From The Heart has been an engagement for over 20 years and allowed us to raise thousands of dollars each year to give scholarships to graduating seniors. So you know, mark that date, we hope to have a wonderful turnout. This one day, I hope that, a year that we get some rain because that cancels all the sports and everyone comes to the show instead. Let's hope for poor weather on that day. But we'd love to have rain or shine. And that's my MTA report for tonight. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle. Do we have any board member delegate representative reports?
Yes, we do. Joanna and I attended the February 7th Somerset County Educational Service Commission meeting. We were very warmly welcomed and participated in their board meeting where there was an overview of the financials and the budget, as well as the results of the audit and how it's being handled. They've made some changes that are significantly increasing their budget for next year and they've actually did some assessments around the cost of buses, which they are now selling to other school districts as they are going to be utilizing some private ways to transport the kids. So it was very interesting. I think we appreciated their insight. They're also in the midst of negotiations, so they had a discussion in regards to that and we had some audience in presence as well. So that's about it. Joanna is the alternate, she joined me, so I don't know if you have anything else I missed. There you go. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
So good evening to everyone. On Wednesday, February 21st, 2024, all Somerset County Board of Education members received an email from the Somerset County School Board's president, Arda Man Singh. The email explained that the Somerset County School Board Association, S C S V A, sponsors the Unsum Hero Program for one 12th grade student from each of the Somerset County Public High Schools. The Unsum Hero Program recognizes students who make outstanding contributions to their school and community but are often overlooked by other traditional student recognition programs. Ms. Singh asked all Somerset County Board of Education members to donate $5 to $10 per member. All monies collected will be divided among the students in the form of a gift card for each. Now, several students have been honored in the past and they've achieved outstanding academic success despite disabilities or language barriers or other significant personal challenges. S C S V A honors students who make our school district a better place and inspire others in our local and school community. S C S V A will be honoring 14 students on Monday, March 18th, 2024, at the Somerset County Vocational and Technical High School in Bridgewater, I believe, starting at 6:00 P. M. As I need to submit the monies by March 5th, I request each board member to kindly advise me immediately upon adjournment of this meeting if you'll donate and if you will, how much. This concludes my S C S V A report. Are there any questions?
Very nice. Any other reports?
Yeah, I have to share the, from the meeting, the municipal alliance and youth service commission. Actually, several of the points that were made by the administrators were touched on by the group in our meeting a couple of weeks ago. I also want to acknowledge that Ms. Lackenhauer was also honored at the Montgomery Township council meeting on the last February 50th with the resolution for the work that she's been doing in partnership with the municipal alliance. One of the things that we discussed that is very relevant is the municipal alliance is thinking of creating a screening of a documentary called "Like." And "Like" is a documentary that explores the impact of social media on our lives and the effects of technology on the way. So right now, this documentary is going to be shown in summer available, but we were talking about having it shown here in Montgomery. So at least it's closer to other school districts like Hillborough who will be interested in, you know, participating, viewing this documentary. The other thing too, which is also relevant, the Global Day of Unplugging is actually on March 1st and the municipal alliance is encouraging families and communities to disconnect from the online world on that day for an hour, a day, a couple of hours, and just, you know, just enjoy each other's company at home with your kids, your parents, your, you know, friends and be off social media. That would be a great mental health break day. And the last thing is, I also went to the Montgomery Township Council meeting and I thought it was interesting.
First up, assessment curriculum and instruction committee, Board Member Dowling.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm working up to a moment. Okay, we met as a committee on February 16th in a hybrid fashion. And first up was Ms. Borland, who brought up three recommendations for high school textbooks for the 11th grade honors English class. Those three books include Where the Craw Dad Sing, Kiara and the Sun, and The Nickel Boys. So that, those three books are up for approval this evening by the board. Ms. Borland also gave us an update on the HIT grant. As of the time of meeting, we were 70% staffed in terms of what we need from Kelly Services. Kelly Services hiring has been excellent so far. The feedback has been very, very good. The tutors are diverse in age, gender, and race. All of the teachers have been incredibly positive about this initiative. We are waiting for two more math tutors to be hired and waiting for two ELA tutors to get through the background check process. The math tutors were trained and, sorry, by our K4 math supervisor and our 5'8" math supervisor. For the reading training, we hired American Reading Company. Another update will be given in six to seven weeks in terms of how the progress of the program is going. We also had an update from Jeff Brooks on staff cybersecurity and phishing campaign. The update hasn't come out with the cyber, excuse me, cybersecurity regulation yet. However, best practices are available. And we have compliance as a district with our insurance brokers to carry a minimal premium that allows for cybersecurity and phishing campaigns for training for employees. We are currently under contract with a company that manages phishing campaigns for us and provides training videos of cyber best practices. Jeff Brooks, the Director of Technology, will be going to each faculty meeting to train the staff in March. And in March and April, there will be two week-long campaigns where we send each staff member three phishing attempts to see if the staff likes. Next year, the training for staff will be offered similar to GCN, and the outcome will be reported to Jeff. We will also do quarterly phishing campaigns. Lastly, Dr. Young spoke about HIV presentation for parents for the district website to parallel to our presentation this evening. The HIV presentation for parents will be discussed in some capacity later this month. Dr. Young, the Director of Equity, Data, and Accountability, will be reporting this presentation with our communications specialist, who is also going to build a page on our website for HIV information. She will report responses to very specific frequently asked questions. Any questions?
I have a question. So those three books that we are adding to our curriculum, we are assigning those books to our students to read in another grade in English honor classes, right?
English honor classes, yes.
Well, it was the criteria for those books selection because as I'm watching the books that we are adding to our list, it seems like those books continue to keep the same type of subjects. So there is sexual abuse, there is some type of violence. And one of the books that we added is about love, which kind of would give you hope in a sense, you know, like inspirational book to kind of help kids to perceive positivity. And the night that I read the description of that book is about really a lonely person that we kind of parent by the person that they are to be afraid, which is kind of sad. And it doesn't really solve the loneliness of children. So if we are inspired to promote mental health, social well-being of students, how are we selecting books that have such deep, traumatic, you know, really message for the kids? Is that aligned with what we are trying to do?
So it is aligned in terms of the standards of what we are required to teach in our curriculum. But I do know that there's an extensive evaluation process. Just for timing purposes, I'm trying to figure out how I can relay this. There is an evaluation form that the district goes to in terms of going, you know, understanding every literacy text and what they're trying to achieve, which I can share with you as well. So a few of the questions that we asked during the ACI. Where the Craw Dad Sing is the book that has the innuendo of sexual, and it is not anything that's explicit in the actual text. It's, yes, but it's truthful. You know, it's something that actually does happen in life. I personally always advocate for our students to experience things like that in a text that not necessarily in real life. The other two were things like this.
I agree with you, but we already have a number of books that...
This was also not going to be reviewing any other text. It was only going to be an addition. It's not a requirement. It's up to the teachers who teach the grade 11 honors classes as to whether or not they will be using this text to accompany a specific theme where this fits in. We also had a big discussion about the complexity. You know, when you get to 11th grade honors English, you know, the texts that are in print are complex. You know, they have very deep, difficult subject matter. And we had a big discussion about, you know, having those conversations in the context and in the safety of a classroom setting, and the importance of teachers being prepared to be able to do that. But I think it is, you know, if you really look at the challenge of an 11th grade honors English course, you know, it's difficult to find a book that doesn't have these themes within its context. But again, it's all on how you deliver it and how you teach it in a safe environment. But I can share this evaluation form with you.
She did send us the evaluation forms for all three of the books.
Did she send it to the whole committee? Like, she sent it?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll get that to you.
Thank you. But yeah, the other two books though, you know, one is a little bit more about a dystopian setting and AI and things that are really, I think, are important to be incorporated in. And the other is a historical look of Ceteaurids era issues with African-Americans.
That would be the Nickel Boys, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Board Member Dowling. Moving on to operations, facilities, and finance. Board Member Felix.
The operations, financing facilities committee met on Friday, November 3rd. We welcomed representatives from the Montgomery Prophets and Historical Society to discuss the maintenance matters related to the schoolhouse building next to the Hill School. The Historical Society has energized to reopen the schoolhouse to the public and confirm various educational programs to the students. We discussed the maintenance needs of the schoolhouse. We also discussed the value of obtaining a survey of the schoolhouse cavity and marking the boundaries to prevent unintentional approaching into the schoolhouse property. The Historical Society agreed to share the plans for educational programs they intend to offer to other students and anticipate the final frequency of these programs. I look forward to further discussions with the head of the prophets Historical Society to pull in line on the next steps. Next, we had a visit from the auditor from Sukri, Cluny, and Company to discuss a financial audit report they recently prepared for the Montgomery School District for the period ending June 10th, 2023. The auditor explained to the committee the testing scope and the areas of focus. He stressed that that audit was not a corporation order, but a statutory financial audit that provides assurance that the amounts reported in the financial statements are pretty of a periodic statements. And report is prepared in accordance with U.S. principles generally accepted in the USA. The auditor confirmed that the district operated within approved budget limits. We discussed the material amounts in the report by pension by really obligations. This amount is allocated by state for each district, and it was dealt in accordance with GSP 67 and 68. The audit report includes a schedule of insurance coverage in place in the district. And the orders noted in the report that adequacy of insurance coverage is the responsibility of a moral education. So I'm hoping at the next conference meeting, maybe we can review existing coverage to ensure that as we move towards the next audit, we are ready and we have proper coverage in place. The auditor made one recommendation, and he will communicate this recommendation to the five board in person next month at the board meeting.
Any questions?
Thank you, Board Member Felix. Moving on. Policy and Communications Committee, co-chairs, Lekka Jernigan and Spence Moss.
Thank you. On the policy, we met on February 8th. We've had some discussions in regards to Strauss ESME and NJSPA services offered to Board of Education. I think last month, if you remember, we heard from NJSPA representative, and they shared with us a pretty extensive way of doing what they call the wellness check on the policies. We're in the midst of having a conversation with Strauss ESME. I'm having a hard time communicating my requirement as, I think Strauss ESME is looking to audit our policies as a standalone organization. I would like for it to be a more of a collaborative effort with some of the board members. So Mary and I are going to work on that together with Strauss ESME. And also, we've discussed that there's a potential for us to continue policy writing with Strauss ESME and perhaps utilize NJSPA for just their wellness check. And part of the reason for that is I've sent to all of you the certificate for the Board of Education. There's an opportunity for us as a team to complete a New Jersey State Board of Education certificate that will allow us to be recognized as one of the boards that completes it. So I hope to have further discussion with all of you on that as well. A couple of policies. The policy that we actually reviewed was 5116, which is Education of Homeless Children and Youth. It's actually a law, which is part of the reason we've had a pretty extensive discussion during the meeting in regards to the policies reflected in our manual should really reflect the policies associated with our school district versus the broad law. Law will be there. So that's why I'm stressing so much that we do the wellness check and we really clean up some of the policies that we have that are recovered elsewhere. So that's the only policy that we had reviewed in addition to that. And then the other part of our discussion was in regards to communication. And Cookie and Christina were there, and we've had some thoughts there. So I'm going to hand it over to Cookie to cover.
So when we met, it was right before the strategic planning meeting, the last one. So I have a question primarily for Mary. I heard you say that NJ, you were waiting for the NJSPA to submit to the district or the collated materials from the three strategic planning meetings. Do you have a timeline at least of what is it going to look like after you receive from NJSPA the materials? You sit down with your staff. At what point does the POE at all, do we come in to look at all this information that has been gathered? What are the next steps that you foresee that we...
I want to see this staff come up with the objectives for the goals and the timelines for the objectives. It will be presented to the board.
And would that happen at least before the next school year? Would you be questioning anything about when we expect the NJSPA?
I need to talk to Mary.
Okay. And the other thing that we wanted to bring up is the retreat. I think it's usually we have our retreat in the spring. So I wanted to bring it up so that we can all kind of look at timeframe. When do we expect to do a retreat? And you have John Bell's for that.
You will have to look at some dates, get those on the calendar, and then we'll send out something to the board to figure out what our challenge is for this year.
Yeah, there was one more request. Michelle and I had a little sidebar, and we sent a note to Gwen, Mary. I think what would be great for us as we review the strategic plan and the feedback from the community as we are a board of committees, thank you. As we're the board of committees, that we look at some of the issues that the community has brought in or would like us to look at, and we really specifically focus on each committee having responsibility for certain portions of the strategic plan. So I did send that note to Gwen. Michelle and I had this sidebar. So hopefully, we can connect that together. She did commit that she was going to think through it at that level as well. So I just wanted to... Thank you.
Can I ask a clarifying question on that? Because I just want to make sure I understand this right. The strategic plan goals are the goals for the district faculty, staff, to implement for student achievement. And then we, as a board, have separate goals, don't we also? Okay. And so then, when do we have to...
I think that's the question about the retreat.
Right. Exactly. But the goal should be aligned with...
Right.
So I guess a retreat would be dependent on when we get the information from NJSPA because it's happening. We don't know what's on there.
As Mary said, they should...
And can I ask one more question? This is about the NJSPA certifications. Did you find out any of the answers about if we can use those previous retreats and all of that?
Yes, there's... Yes, and I will be sending it out to all of you so you have some insight. There was actually a board that has completed that. And if you and Patrick joined the NJSPA session, the Somerset County one, and we did that virtually, but I think next one, you know, we can actually talk live to the individuals that went through it so we can all get some more insight from them as well.
Get the data in there.
And can I ask one more question? This is about the NJSPA certifications. Did you find out any of the answers about if we can use those previous retreats and all of that?
Yes, there's... Yes, and I will be sending it out to all of you so you have some insight. There was actually a board that has completed that. And if you and Patrick joined the NJSPA session, the Somerset County one, and we did that virtually, but I think next one, you know, we can actually talk live to the individuals that went through it so we can all get some more insight from them as well.
Get the data in there.
And just a question about reviewing the policies. How does that work exactly? Do you do that in the policy committee? Like, you literally go through every policy? Or is that something that you do sort of in addition to our committee meetings?
I envision it to do it in addition, which is why I mentioned last time that if anybody would like to volunteer in additional time, that would be great because, yeah, it's... that if anybody would like to volunteer in additional time, that would be great because, yeah, it's, it's a subcommittee, but.
But so it's subcommittee of the policy.
It would have to be in addition to just once enough, right? Otherwise, we'll be added for three years and right on that kind of time. So I think, yes, there will be additional commitment.
Got it.
As long as it's afterward, I would like to help.
We have the NJSPA people come in about their policy application. So that's, that's completely off the table now. We're going to stick with Strauss ESME for the next year or more.
I think this is something that we all need to discuss broadly, right, as a board, right? We can, we can take a vote eventually and figure it out. But I would like to send you guys some additional insight and post. Mary and I having a conversation with Strauss ESME. I think it's fair for us to really understand what their audit means versus the wellness check we learned about last month. So we'll be getting back to you all and then hopefully we'll have an opportunity to vote and see which way we want to go.
We talked about it at the meeting too. My hesitation with NJSPA, the director is new. She's only been here, she admitted that they're behind. So this is a conversation we can revisit in another, maybe another year when she's gotten a full staff and they've had a little bit more grasp about the work that they're doing. Because I don't want us to move to a different group and we're one of the early adopters and then we're having more problems than we already have. I mean, we don't really have big problems like that, but if you're early adopters and they're behind, that could be disastrous for us.
That's a valid concern, but I think that's why what we were trying to maybe propose is to have this wellness check, which does not come without to switch from one vendor to another. But then during that wellness check, we can identify whether or not our policies are redundant. Maybe we can just lower the number of policies because then it's easier to maintain. And then at that point, we can make a decision whether another step is needed to achieve it. So we can keep, you know, the manner that we have, but now we have a better understanding of what's involved.
That's a good plan.
NJSPA would help us find, this was a big benefit. I'm kind of surprised to hear you say that they're already, because they came in, they gave that big presentation. They're a much bigger organization, so I'm most surprised at that.
I understand, but she herself admitted that she's new and she doesn't have staff. She just started building a staff, so I don't want us to like join in without knowing what their capabilities are. Once they're full, maybe once they're full staff, fully staff, there'll be more robust reviews and they're, they could be better. But we can't make that decision right now.
So did she say a year?
At the meeting?
Yeah, and she said a year was appropriate. You're saying you don't want to do this till next year, right? She said it's about one time.
I do not understand what you're saying. Geez, I don't understand what you're saying.
I think he's asking, did she say that a year out from now will be appropriate to engage with them?
No, I, she didn't say that. I'm saying, I will reevaluate whether or not we could look at them and maybe use them. But right now, I don't think it's a good idea for us to switch, is what I'm saying.
Could we do that like a sooner?
I think let's do what Anya's plan is first, which is to use the wellness check and have their conversations with Strauss ESME. And then we'll see. Like I will take the lead from Anya based on her conversations that she's having now.
All right, I was excited, but.
I think, you know, whenever we get close to a vote, if we can do a side by side comparison, you know, of the two, I think to really be able to understand the strengths and the challenges of each, I think that would give us an informed way of voting. I don't want to vote on something unless we know, you know, exactly what.
Well, I have Michelle. And also some sort of pitfalls to avoid and really great athletes from a district that did it through the whole process. It'd be lovely. Yeah, and interestingly enough, because we are very familiar with some of those school districts around us, there have been few school districts that switched due to this extensive wellness check process, right? So that's kind of what I'm feeding off of, to be honest with you, right, hearing their experience. So I'll get you guys a little bit more insight on that as well.
You have any questions, comments? Thank you. Moving on. Human Resources Committee, HRC, met on February 12th. We talked about the two positions, first one being the Director of Special Services. We have about 15 applicants currently reviewing the applications and hoping to have candidates chosen and interviewed in the next couple of weeks. Also talked about the Supervisor of Special Education position. The committee is in the process of doing interviews for those. Principal Pino Beatty joined us, informed us that the STAR program will be expanded into other schools. The SS was initially programmed that we started with and provided advancements of help to our students while keeping them in Montgomery. We are looking to get more information about that expansion, expansion program very soon. Also on the personnel agenda, we believe that we're going to be going to be proposing positions at O H, ES, VES, LMS, UMS, and the high school. We talked about transportation. Our in position currently using the service to provide our in on the bus and they're, right now, they're very unreliable. Currently, there's one student that needs a service, transportation specialist, stipend position, who will train all transportation employees. Just to provide, we're looking at bringing in two safety and security coordinators, one for LMS and one for VES. Is that it? Any questions?
If we were new to the STAR program, we could be fine. Sort of information just to educate ourselves more on the program.
I will put her on the spot since she is still here.
Sorry, ESPN.
So if you go onto the high school website on the departments, there's a link for STAR. And there's a pretty good amount of information. And if anyone needed anything else, I would be the person to contact them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, President. All right, moving on. Now I have a promo of the minutes for the October 30th, 2023 business meeting, which have been revised. January 23rd, 2024 executive session meeting and January 23rd, 24 business meeting. I want to change the motion. It's been properly moved in the second to accept these meetings, to accept these minutes. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, same rank. Questions? Motion carries. The board acknowledges the correspondence list to the board. Next up, agenda items, public comments. The Board of Education welcomes and encourages input from the public. Members of the public are allowed one opportunity to address the board regarding action agenda items only for up to a maximum of three minutes per speaker. All comments must be directed to the board. Before you make your comment, please state your full name and address and enter both from the Chromebook provided. Be mindful of privacy rights regarding students, board employees, and board members. And to avoid any liability on the part of the speaker, the board discourages defamatory and discourteous remarks. The public comment portions of the meeting are not structured as question and answer sessions, but rather are offered as opportunities for the public to share their thoughts with the board. The board may refer, may need to refer an issue to the superintendent if the issue has not been handled through the appropriate chain of command, usually starting at the school level. Responses may be provided at the end of this session. So now, members of the committee, action items, all. Any public comments? And when you start making your comments, please listen to the action item number. So we have another comment afterwards.
Do it later. Sit down.
Second call for public comments on action items. Third call for public comments on action items. Public comments and action items are closed. I will now entertain a motion to adopt action items 1.1 through 4.4 plus the following resolution. Be resolved that the Board of Education denies the appeal in HIB number 257554-UMS-0103204. Mr. Trell. Is there a motion?
Second.
It's been properly moved in the second to adopt action items 1.1 through 4.1 plus the resolution I read. Any questions?
Call it to us.
No question. Any questions? Ready for the vote? Mr. Trell.
Mr. Carl's.
Resolution, no.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Ms. Felix.
Yes.
Ms. Franco Harmon.
Yes, extension on 1.3 previously discussed.
Understood. Dr. Spence Walls.
Yes.
Abstention on the previously determined items.
Understood. Ms. Felix Jernigan.
Yes.
Ms. Spina.
Yes.
Mr. Tucker.
Yes, thank you.
All motions carried. Thank you. We now move to new business from the public. The Board of Education welcomes and encourages input from the public. Members of the public are allowed one opportunity to bring any new business to the board for up to a maximum of three minutes per speaker. All comments must be directed to the board. Before you make your comment, please state your full name and address and enter both from the Chromebook provided. Be mindful of privacy rights regarding students, board employees, and board members to avoid any potential liability on the part of the speaker. The board discourages defamatory and discourteous remarks. The public comment portions of the meeting are not structured as question and answer session. The board may need to refer an issue to the superintendent if the issue has not been handled through the appropriate chain of command, usually starting at the school level. Responses may be provided at the end of this session. And as usual, we ask if you plan on making public comments, please line up.
Okay, well, this is very technologically intense. My name is Candy Willis. I'm at Nipperbacher Drive in Belton, New Jersey. And I'm here representing the Van Harlingen Historical Society. We had a meeting, a few of us, with the OFF committee and I thought I would just come and talk to you a little bit about the school that was not represented by the five principals who showed up. There's one more school built inside your property. And it's known as the Beavensville Schoolhouse. It was built in 1853, but moved to the property in 1976 as part of the bicentennial program for the township. So the bicentennial program was the township. The Van Harlingen Historical Society took over the responsibility for maintenance of it. It's a small one-room schoolhouse. There were about 12 one-room schoolhouses in town, so now you only have five, but much bigger. So I wasn't going to go into a lot of detail today, except that I made a handout for you and I'm from back, I put them around your desks. And I'm going to go from back to front. So the, in the back, it is the Van Harlingen Historical Society's newsletter that just came out. It's called The Van Harlingen Historian, so I thought you might like a copy of it. Then there's a shameless advertisement for a program on March 21st called Remembering the Ladies From Patriots and Petticoats to Presidential Candidates. That'll be at the Montgomery Library on March 21st. Then I gave each of you, except for Joanna and Marty, a copy of this little booklet that came out in 1976. So it's almost 50 years old and they're all printed in checkbooks. So then, second from the front is an article that I wrote strangely enough in 2008 that said Beavensville Schoolhouse in Dayton got two fronts and it had to do with paving a parking lot. They wanted to, the school board wanted to put up a, in 2008, wanted to put up this gigantic parking lot in the back in this grassy field. And it's thanking that they reconsidered when the Historical Society, the PTA, and a whole bunch of different people objected to it. The problem is that the schoolhouse is being forgotten. So in 2011, the township engineer didn't know that the schoolhouse was there and arranged for it. Arranged for a pipeline to be run right in back of it. It was run, we put up a plaque so on the front page, I showed you two pictures of the schoolhouse, what it looks like before the painting. And the plaque that has our web address on it so that we were trying to tell you, we're right here. Please let us know if you're going to do anything. So I'm going to come back next month. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Rich Spec, 227 North Street, LV. I've got a bunch of things, so I'll just try and run through them quickly, looking at the time. So first of all, congratulations again on the strategic planning meetings. You know, I think that it's excellent that you're doing that. I think that it's important to remember that these are long-term strategic goals. They're not like the annual district goals. I want to also express my appreciation for the preparation and the participation of the district administration and staff. And the large number of staff members meeting, which I thought was useful. And one of the comments, just reacting to that I heard at the table was, I think the board should be involved during the process. What I hope doesn't happen is that it's primarily the administration to come up with some of these things, but these are long-term goals that the board representing the community is responsible for. And so I would hope that it's a very collaborative process going forward. It isn't just we're throwing something across the table and it's coming back type of thing. Speaking of district goals on the agenda, the district goals are listed. These are the ones that were established last September. Three of the four goals actually were from prior years. I don't remember any staff's presentations at board meetings. And so I have some questions. If I've overlooked things, please let me know after this. But what action plans were created for those goals? How will you know if the goal is being met or not? Or at the conclusion, was it met? And what progress has been made so far? I also wanted to observe since communication is something near and dear to my heart and also came up a number of times in the strategic planning meetings. I want to commend the district for being active now and having a district presence on social media, both Facebook and Instagram. The thing that disappointed me or that I wanted to react to was so far since last August, there are total on Facebook, there are 70 followers, where the township has over 3,000. And so my question is, how many people actually know that there is a district Facebook page? And maybe Facebook isn't being used by the community, but that's the kind of question. Has the, has the district published on other Facebook pages that this thing existed? Has the district had, the township include that in their newsletter or anything? Okay. And, you know, I just think that like in social media, there was no mention of the strategic planning process in the front of it. And the only mention on it was, hey, this is, you know, here's a picture. Thanks for being there. There was no, here's the next meeting. If you want to be a part of it, do it. The community, I don't think, really knew that this process was going on. And finally, the consultant recommendation that we had with the consultant we hired for communications. Yep, wanted to have a strategic plan, so I would ask where that strategic plan is. Is it in preparation? When will it be done? And so I also.
Good evening. Can you hear me better? In the spirit of transparency, could we please explain to the community how the school ethics commission decisions mentioned by Board Member Spina at the January 5th board meeting affect the board members and the rules inserted on the board? I think the community deserves to know. Also, we hear a lot about safe spaces in our schools and I've been attending these board meetings for about two years in person now. And I've observed some very poor behavior by some residents and I understand this board can only do so much about that. But I would like to address two specific areas where I think you can have an effect. First, I was harassed publicly by a school district employee who must have seen a teacher and a new officer at the October 2023 board meeting. Community members seated by me were so stunned at what they witnessed that they asked me if I just wouldn't threaten. I advised the board of this behavior and submitted a video clip of the event taken by a concerned resident. I have not been notified of any reprisals for the employee and I can't fathom that if a parent complains about a teacher's behavior, the incident would not be followed up on by the parent and student. Please advise here and now that the follow-up laws, or at the very least, please advise what your processes. your process is for following up on those instances generally. It is not acceptable for a district to ignore this type of behavior by a district employee, especially in a public board event meeting in a public school. Second, I believe that any media present at this meeting should be just observing and reporting, not harassing or interfering with the proceedings or lack of participation in the meetings. Please speak to the Montgomery News editor and publisher that if she cannot impose herself on a professional manner at these meetings to send another reporter, we can't. The local newspaper editor has flashed her camera in people's faces. Once after, a community member asked her not to take a photo with her student relative. I have access to a video of a second instance when she flashed her camera in the face of a board member's husband, when she had liked his response to something he saw on his phone. My family member was a witness to this incident. I have other instances I can report on, but I don't have the time here to mention. I would also ask the newly organized board for a couple of things that might help promote community communication and transparency. Please respond to public questions and comments. Giving no comment or response, having to send follow-up emails, doing an Oprah, just adds more work to the board, and most of all, oh, Mr. Trent. It also frustrates the public requesting the responses. Please have the board meeting minutes specifically reflect any board responses to the public during meetings, just as they capture the questions or comments. And I also just really want to quickly thank you for starting the board meetings now at 7 o'clock. That helps a lot, I think that helps a lot. Thank you.
Hey, everybody. Jeff Grant, Jeff Grant, 67 East and Drive. First of all, I want to, you know, compliment the board. And so is Mr. Todd. The committees are hopping and hopping and things are happening, so it looks like we're off the hook to start. The first comment is about the snacks. The melon was delicious, the strawberries recyculate. It's bad, but it's something where you got it, but I'd like to know where you got it. It's actually great. So more, more seriously, my comment or my question last time about around this time last year, the board was planning a trip to South Africa to visit, collaborate with the South African Democratic Teachers Union. And since then, there's a lot of discussion about South Africa, what they are, if they're not. It's not good. And of course, when we found that matter, we was just happy to find a budget item and questioned it, and it was, the town was financing one of the expenses of the trip to South Africa on a six-day or seven-day journey to South Africa. So very simply, in spite of the best efforts of Nelson Mandela, South Africa is a reverse wing racism country. More recently, they have required that if you're a farmer and you're going to be sold to this European Union or UK, 51% of your farm has to be owned by a black citizen. So the black politicians are sitting making money, they're, as farmers have deeded over 51% of their farm, but they're just sitting making money. All white farmers are moving to work and producing their goods and selling them to the European Union and England. So that's, that's the form of slavery we think about. It's reverse slavery, reverse wing racism. So, you know, I caution you about ever going back to South Africa or ever having any relationship with the South African Democratic Teachers Union. So let's give it one more time. Please define any relationship you have with the South African Democratic Teachers Union. Define any, any plans to go back to South Africa or any similar journey. We want to know where you're going if you're leaving our community. Of course, we prefer you to stay here and focus on business here. So please answer that question. And the second issue is, I happened to hear some comments about, you know, Ramadan's coming up, and there's some events planned in March. Talk about what's going to be happening in May, extending the timescale out to talk about May. And what was missing is any discussion about Easter. I know Barbara's here or was here. I don't want to hear any accusations about Jeff Grant making the call to Christendom.
Thirty seconds.
However, the Muslim population in New Jersey is about 30%. Christian population is much larger. So my second question is, are we going to be doing anything in Montgomery Township School District to acknowledge Easter, Christian, Christian holiday of Easter? So with that, those were my remarks. Thank you very much.
Any other public comments? Second call, public comments. Third call, public comments. Public comments closed. Superintendent McLaughlin, any ideas you wish to address at the current moment?
Well, the easiest one is the food is from ShopRite. The Montgomery ShopRite. That's where the food is from tonight. Rich, I have all of your questions, and I will follow up with them. Thank you for writing them all down, if that would have been difficult to try to capture. Thank you, Candy, for coming and sharing the information, and thank you for coming to our OFF meeting on Friday. And Mr. Grant, we do not have any affiliation with the South African Teachers Democratic Union, however, that's no relationship. And Janet, we did receive your emails regarding the staff member, and like all complaints against staff members, there's internal investigation and due to confidentiality, we never share out even with parents, with officers, or students. But this was even different because it was at a public meeting, so I cannot share any of that information. Yes, we did look into it. Thank you for sending the video.
Ms. Church, you asked a question with me at the January meeting. I had asked a question of the attorney as to whether or not we needed a majority vote in order to put an inquiry forth to the SEC. And his answer at that time was that any board member can do so as an individual. That was what I asked that night, and he clarified that. I can't speak to that. I can only tell you what I said or asked that night. I just wanted to know from him that I answered.
Any other questions? Any other questions, comments, discussion, any other important matters? More will discuss in public. Here we are now, I entertain a motion for adjournment. Proper to move in second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Thank you all, have a good evening.